I never really know if I have a clon phobia. Wait, it doesn't say...
Guardian, what I'm about to tell you stays between us. While we have been fighting, an ancient gate has entered on Mercury. And an army of past and future machines amasses. They intend to reshape the universe in their image. But there is one who has glimpsed this dark future. He was my mentor. Osiris. The most notorious guardian in Vanguard history. Once, his dangerous ideas nearly destroyed us, and he was banished. Now he has returned, but will he be a powerful ally or bring us death? You are the one thing they have not foreseen.
In the spirit of full disclosure, I have yet to watch the trailer.
Time is not on our side.
Should watch it. It's full of Osiris.
Get the expansion pass now. Two all-new expansions, one great value.
Yo, what's up everybody? Jumping here. Today I wanted to show you guys my overpowered warlock build in Destiny-
This guy, right here. Blood Karma. He's the one following you.
God damn it. Can you hear me now, Complete? Hopefully you can hear me now. I don't know why you can't hear me, but you can hear them. That's weird. Okay, well, I'm just fucking up all the technical issues, but there you go, right? And, um, so anyway, I was just saying that we're over in Destiny 1 so that we could play around with the Halloween mask. Um, I, I think that I've decided that I like this one the best because it looks cool. It looks pretty awesome. Um, but they're not doing, um, Festival of the Lost for Season 1 of Destiny 2. They might be doing it in next year. I don't know. We shall see. Um, so people are probably wondering, um, you know, what's going on with the schedule and all of that for Destiny 2? Um, until December 5th, when the next one or the next, uh, release will come out. Um, we don't really know what's going on with the schedule, honestly. So we need to know what you guys want to do as a schedule. Um, if you have something that you really want to do, let us know. Try and work it out. Um, we are going to try and get, um, you know, full raid teams more often. Um, all that good stuff, so that way we can get through the raid officially within the raid on the, the scheduled night. We have not finished the, um, the raid yet. Um, but we've gotten really close. It just kind of depends on who we have running around in the, um, in the fire team and all that good stuff. Um, but you know, it's, we're, we're gonna work on it. And, um, Cosmic and Tape have, um, one of these days, Tape, I'm going to get used to calling you Tape again and not Tape. Um, Cosmic and Tape have been, you know, working on gathering some new strat. Um, and hopefully we can get it so that it's easier. Everybody's power level should be pretty, you know, pretty close to 300, if not past 300 by now. Um, if you do need help getting your power level up, let us know. We can help you out. It's really, um, just a matter of, of getting that powerful gear. Um, and, uh, doing the raid is not required to get to 305. So actually, all of the gear that I've gotten from the raid have been under my power. So don't feel like that's the only way you're ever gonna make it to 305. Not. Um, there are, um, exotics that you can get from the public events, which will help you until you get past 300 and then it's kind of empty. Um, but you know, like those powerful gears that you get from during your Call to Arms, your Flashpoint, uh, your Clan, the key for the week, um, all that type of stuff. Um, that's really what's gonna help you is your power level. So power level, um, making sure you have good-ish weapons or whatever. Um, hunters have Celestial Nighthawk are awesome, um, because they help out a lot with the back house. Um, the, uh, and the tethers too are great. Um, you know, shock lock is great for our warlocks to kill, to, to clear the ads. Um, the striker titans can do some massive amounts of damage, especially if they run the double pulse grenades. Um, those can like take out a beast in the pleasure gardens. So you know, there is, there's different ideas that we're coming up with. Um, and a lot of it just has to deal with like getting used to the mechanics and all. So we're going to get there eventually, right? Um, but it just takes practice and a lot of it is going and making sure that we have a full fire team and all of that. So if you're available on a, you know, a Friday night or whatever, um, and you want to run the raid, that's where we're going to get. Now, what else we're going to be doing during the rest of the week is kind of up in the air. Um, I've started off this with the trailer for, um, Secrets of Osiris, which will be dropping on December 5th. I need to put it on the calendar, but I will. Um, the reason why is because that, that is going to be like our next big content push. Uh, what all that entails, we don't really know yet. Story missions, obviously, um, you know, stuff like that.
Raid.
Uh... New raid? Do a new raid?
New raid, new gear.
Oh, that good stuff.
Space, the lighthouse. Nah, it's new raid.
Is it a new raid? Okay.
Oh, no, a new raid. Okay.
So that's what I thought. I thought it was gonna be a new raid. Um, which is going to help us out immensely because they'll give us more to do, right? Um, the, the raid, um, Leviathan raid is a lot of fun. Um, but I know a lot of people are just kind of bored with it. So, I mean, and I get it, right? If you've been in there doing it a couple times a week, you're probably kind of tired of dealing with cabals yelling at you constantly. Um, but yeah, until then, we will definitely be having the nightfall and we'll be during the raid. Um, and once we get a really, you know, good, uh, the nightfalls and at the, uh, the raid and all that, we can even add the prestige versions, um, as needed, wanted, whatever. Um, Trials is currently turned off, but, uh, whenever it gets back, if you guys- Next weekend, okay. Um, see, this is why I have other people in here with me, because they remind me of the things that I forget while I'm talking. Um, but yeah, once Trials comes back, if you guys want to have that on the schedule and we're going to have like a good amount of people that sign up and stuff, then that'd be awesome. Um, if you don't, well, that's fine too. Um, you know, it's kind of what do you guys want to do? We're at a point really where I feel that Bungie kind of shafted us and that they said that it was going to be more clan-based, but they made it very casual gamer. So, um, you know, especially once he hit 305, it's kind of like, okay, well, what do I do now? There's nothing to go run around and collect. There's no crazy ass special missions, like getting your block spindle or something where you do it for hours and hours on end. There's, you know, there's like no go run around and go pick up chest or ghosts or pacified fragments, whatever the hell, right? Um, and so it's, it's kind of a challenge for me to come up with a calendar of things to do that would be interesting for people to do. So I'd like you, um, you know, I would like to get feedback from you guys. And yeah, Complete, I mean, if, if we do Trials, it would definitely be a very laid-back Trials run. Um, you know, the, the great thing about Trials in Destiny 1 is that you could still do the bounties and get good gear. And if you lost, you actually got better gear than if you won. So, I mean, it was still kind of worth it to do it. Um, but the way that Trials is set up currently, it's not working out. Um, but I mean, go in there and try and shoot things, definitely. I'm down to do whatever. Um, the, um, I totally lost what I was going to say. Oh my gosh. But yeah, so the calendar is just kind of in flux until we figure out, there goes Tape, what you guys want to do. Um, I'm, I'm, I can do flawless losses. I'm good at flawless losses. Covered. Awesome. Uh, private matches are supposed to be coming back sometime in 2018. At that point, we'll bring back things like the tournaments and all that stuff. Um, until that time, we're also talking about doing Go Back to Destiny 1 and Do Crap. So use the private matches here, um, go run like the, the PlayStation-only, uh, exclusive stuff that we now have. Um, you know, go do a, a fun King's Fall or Chrono, whatever, right? Just for the hell of it, because we can, um, you know, just whatever kind of you guys want to do, that would be fun. Um, you know, just let us know, cuz we'll do it. Uh, we will also do hide and seek, um, if you guys want to. I know Tape and I really want to play hide and seek, but if other people want to join us, we will put it on the calendar. Okay, Cosmic's on to you. We're gonna do like hide and seek, because the new tower is frickin' huge. So it, it was going to take me forever to find you guys, because like, especially if like Mo and Tape, uh, they're playing, because I could never find them anyway, so, um-
We're never finding Mo.
Mo's like impossible to find sometimes, but yeah, so start scoping out your hiding spots now, people. Uh, but we'll turn off our hoods and we'll go run around the tower, because it's massive and play hide and seek. That will be fun. Um, he is a ninja. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll try and, and keep up some fun things to do. Um, and I'll have the raid and the nightfalls on. But anything other than that, I need feedback from you guys and what you want to do. Otherwise, we're just gonna have a couple things scheduled a week. Um, and then just kind of go on hiatus until December 5th, because I don't really know what you guys would be. Um, it was a lot easier in Destiny 1, because I had so much content, right? Um, so let us know. That's where I'm going with this. Um, and I think that was everything I- Oh, Seasons. Yes, Seasons. See, I knew there was something else. So, um, Season 2 is going to be starting probably with the drop of Osiris. Um, it will also include the dawning, so, um, that's what like Cosmic is over here with the, a, um, snow globe. And Tape has the, the Drake Snowman, which is actually kind of a good blend of like Christmas and Halloween, because it is kind of scary. But, uh, we'll be having to do something for the dawning again. Um, and, uh, they will be fixing Iron Banner for Season 2, so that you can actually like buy stuff. Um, instead of having to play like 600 matches of Iron Banner. But it will not be fixed for next month's Iron Banner. The November Iron Banner will still be the same. So take it or leave it for what it is. Um, they are also gonna be doing something different for faction rallies in Season 2, I don't know what. Um, whatever is going on with like Osiris or the dawning or whatever is what our, our, our banner, um, rewards, I guess you would call them, would be geared towards. Right now, it's really heavy on like cabals and, um, public events and stuff like that. Um, they're going to be switching it up in next season. Um, I don't know what it's going to switch to. I do know that we had absolutely no problem hitting our max, um, Clan XP every week. Um, so we were able to max out our banner, like as soon as you could max out your banner. Um, I do also know that they will be having like a double XP extravaganza thing at the end of Season 1 to help people, um, with getting their XP up. I guess for people who haven't been as active, do, I don't know. Um, I don't know if that XP is going to count towards things that aren't clan, like a character certain fight, like your ults. Yeah, started them yet? I don't know. So we're kind of, we'll figure out how it goes from there, but at least we now have an answer of what the seasons think. Um, Cosmic and Tape, did you two have anything to add?
Um, not really. I just- Supposed to just working on getting strats for the raid, so we can start raiding and getting completions. And that's what I'll be focused on.
Yeah, definitely. The, the, getting some good ideas for the raid is going to help out. And then I think also it's going to help out if we could just get, um, you know, full teams in there. Um, you know, we remind everybody to make sure that you are not distracted while you're raiding. Um, because, you know, it's, it kind of sucks when we all have to wipe because somebody is, you know, goofing off with a friend or that's over or whatever. Um, so-
Yeah, the raid is very mechanic-heavy, so we all have to be focused.
Exactly.
It's mechanic-heavy like, like King's Fall.
Yeah, um, I'm not saying you can't have fun, because we always have fun, right? That's what we do. But, um, like Cosmic said, it is very mechanic-heavy, like King's Fall was. And until everybody is comfortable with knowing where there's, it's to be when, um, you know, it's good to, to focus on it. And then plus, there's a lot of callouts, right? So we need to be able to hear when, um, especially like Sam the Gauntlet. We need to be able to hear the runners say, "What's your arrow?" or, um- Pretty much every single section has something that you need to have a callout for. So, um, you know, just a reminder to, to keep that in mind. Make sure that, you know, you're, you have your A-game on for it. And it's a really short raid, um, as far as raids go, you know? So I think that when we've had, you know, people that are, are, um, familiar with it, um, and just we're, we were kind of clicking as fire team, we're able to, to get through the entire thing pretty fast. Um, you know, like in an hour or two, um, or at least get to the end boss in an hour or two. Um, so I think eventually, you know, we should be able to, to get through it. You know, like a Chrono, right? Where you can get through it pretty fast. Um, and then we wouldn't mind so much running it multiple times a week, because it's not like it's not much of a, of a problem. Um... Yeah, and, and Complete pointed out that he would like to be able to do things that he hasn't been, hasn't done yet. And I think that's a good idea too, right? Um, you know, if you haven't been the runner yet on the gauntlet or you haven't run, uh, the, the Prism, Crystal Acorn, whatever the hell it's called, things, um, and the pleasure gardens. Um, you know, that's, that's a good thing to do, so that way, uh, you're not like locked into one thing. Um, and then when we're running it, you know, you're a little bit more flexible and more able to, uh, to help out people. And thank you for reminding me to move.
Here's the thing about the prestige raid, once we get there.
Yeah.
Um, it's set up so that you can't just only be pillar and gauntlet. Everybody has to run. Everybody has to take turns for the three rounds.
Mm-hmm.
And callous room, you know? You get teleported in or in and out whenever you, uh, kill a Scion on the outside. It'll randomly teleport people in and out.
Uh, okay.
So before we go into prestige, we really need to make sure that we run raid enough times to get everybody comfortable in all of the positions.
Yeah.
Because nobody wants to learn in a 300 raid, while you're getting face chewed off by a Scion, that, you know?
No.
Let's see.
Um, yeah, it's a good point. I, I didn't realize it, because I haven't really been paying attention to the prestige raid. I've only been looking at strats for the normal raid. Um, but if it is just assigning you kind of like, um, in vault where it randomly picks who's going to be pulled in and who's gonna stay out. If the entire raid's going to be like that, that means that everybody... So I think that will be our new focus, is making sure everybody is, is comfortable with all the different aspects of it. Um, and, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, of practice, right? So we'll get there, and I think that we're gonna be awesome at it. And then we're gonna be like, yay, we finished a raid and we didn't get anything that we actually... But, you know, it's still the raid. So it's... So, um, have they announced what the, the power, max power is going to be yet?
Nope. It's probably gonna be a surprise. They're gonna let us figure it out once we get closer to that date.
Okay.
Even in the gameplay, that like, uh, Bife got his hands on.
Yeah.
They, they didn't actually show any like gear level or anything?
Okay.
So we don't, we don't know. It's all gonna be like, go in there, figure it out. It'll probably be 350.
350 would make sense.
360.
Um...
I see 360 maybe.
So we'll, we'll see then, I guess, um, what is, um, what we're gonna do. Um, but it shouldn't be, uh, that difficult if they keep the way that they are doing things, with getting your, your power level up close to max. And then, you know, you can be like me and stuck trying to get class items as your last thing to get 305. Pride is its ass. But we shall see. Um, is there anybody in chat have any other questions? The big thing that, you know, I wanted to cover is, um, you know, let us know what you want to do on the schedule. Otherwise, I don't have anything to schedule. You know, I really wish that they, they didn't have the, um, the mask bring your power, your light level down so much, because I would have worn them more often. Feel kind of bad. Because this is kind of cool. All right, cool, Complete. Thank you. And, um, thanks for coming and chatting with us while we, we did our Halloween things. Oh, what you reminds me. There will not be anything on the calendar for tomorrow night. No nightfalls, no raid, no nothing. There are no Call to Arms and nothing, nothing, nothing. Um, tomorrow is Halloween, so go stuff your face with candy. Um, eh, there may be people online.
Unless you're diabetic, then please like eat at a consistent slow pace, like couple pieces, cuz-
Yes.
I don't wanna be like, "What happened to Cosmic?" "Well, she ate 15 pounds of candy, cuz Ellie told her to stuff her face."
Okay, I, thank you, Chain, for pointing that out, because, you know, Cosmic is not allowed to eat things that are not good for her.
Fifteen bags of fucking Takis and-
Eh, even though I sent her pictures of ice cream, she shouldn't eat it.
Mistakes were made with the Takis.
Oh my god, Cosmic. Okay, so for all of you who are not diabetic, cuz stuff your face with candy. For everyone else, go find some sugar-free candy or something. I don't know.
Eat some carrots. Eat Eric's orange raisins.
Go have some Ascendant raisins. I don't know.
I don't know if I'd want Ascendant raisins. I might just go for the regular ones. Raisins been sitting out for years.
Yeah, I know. I was gonna say, it's been sitting in my vault for a couple years, so I don't know. Stock of celery, yes. And, uh, we will pick up on Wednesday night, uh, with nightfalls and then we'll just kind of go from there. Um, we might do Wednesday and Thursday nightfalls, to speak, and Friday, the raid, Saturday, and then dreams, special for Saturday night. And I don't know, we're just gonna kind of leave it up in the air. So you want to do something, you let me know, and we'll do it. Dude, if you have raisins in your pantry for a year, you should not eat them. All right, so I'm going to sign this off and, uh, we will- All right, so I'm going to sign this off and, uh, we will see you guys next month.